今日呢個特別會議咧，首先就好多謝
All right, members. This is a special meeting of the F H C H panel. Thank you very much for joining us despite a short notice. Let's invite the administration and all the invitees to come into the chamber, please. I'd like to welcome government officials to this special meeting. Dr. Ko Wing Ben, this is Sam Aaron Lai, Permanent Secretary for Food and Health. Mr. Philip Chen, Deputy Secretary for Food and Health. Mr. Andy Chen, Deputy Secretary for Transport and Housing. Mr. Clement Cheung, J P, Commissioner for Customs and Exis. Mr. K Yue, Assistant Commissioner for Customs and Exis, Boundary and Ports. Mr. Eric Tseng, Assistant Director of Immigration. Mr. K F Shem, Principal Immigration Officer, Enforcement Immigration Department. Mr. W F Yook, Assistant Director, Efficiency Unit. Mr. Brian Law, Deputy Director General of Trade and Industry Department. Welcome, Dr. Ko and your team for joining us at such a short notice. And I would also like to welcome, again at very short notice, the attendance of various organizations. There are in fact seven formula book suppliers and representatives from the retail sector. Let me take this up with members. First of all, we would like to invite the guests to take the floor and speak. I'll be inviting all the organizations to spend three minutes talking about the issue. Then I'll be inviting the Secretary for Food and Health to make his statement if he sees the need to do so. Do you think this is the right way to go? Okay, then, on behalf of the panel on food safety and environmental hygiene, I'd like to welcome all the deputations. I understand that we have imposed some pressure on you because right after the press conference, we invited you all to come here. And I'm really glad that you have taken time out of hectic schedule to join us for this meeting. And my grateful thanks to all of you. I understand that some of you have handed in your submissions. And this panel is particularly concerned whether we can have better ways. On the one hand, those in the mainland who need to buy formula milk in Hong Kong and also Hong Kong parents will also be served. And anything that will enable us to achieve that, please, by all means, let us know. We keep hearing from the market that there is enough supply of formula milk. And how to actually work out the stock and the supply? Would there be any difference in terms of supply to the chains as well as the small pharmacies? Would there be any difference in terms of the wholesale price and so on? I mean, if you can address all these issues, please, by all means. All right, then, without further ado, I'd like to invite the following organizations to speak. Three minutes each, please. First of all, Hong Kong General Chamber of Pharmacy Limited, Mr. Lau Oi Kwok, Chairman. Thank you. Thanks very much, Chairman. I am Chairman of the Hong Kong General Chamber of Pharmacy Limited. Now, we're talking about infant formula. And I'd like to speak on behalf of the chamber. In Hong Kong, the supply of infant formula did cause a great deal of concern. And there were lots of reports in the media. It was reported that there is a shortage of supply. As a responsible general chamber, we will do everything we possibly can to help the mothers in Hong Kong to purchase formula milk. We'll be liaising with the suppliers to make sure that Hong Kong babies will be fed with formula. We fully appreciate that babies tend to use a particular brand. But there is a shortage for certain brands. So we will be working together to keep the formula milk for the babies in Hong Kong. We will liaise with the suppliers to see how the infant formula can be supplied to the babies. We've got a hotline between Mondays and Fridays, ten to five every day. We, this hotline is this is meant over this period, two, five, four, three, nine, two, two, three. We'll make sure the Hong Kong babies will be given sufficient supply. If, I mean, indeed, there are certain products that run short of supplies. And for a particular brand, there can be different stages. And some babies find it difficult to find a particular type. Now, we have liaised with the members. And we have decided that all the pharmacies will keep part of the stock for Hong Kong babies. Those with a birth certificate will be supplied with the baby formula. If indeed there is a shortage, we will liaise with other pharmacies to match the babies with the right formula. Or alternatively, we'll talk with the parents and see whether they would be willing to switch to other products. We have good supplies except a few brands. We have that the Hong Kong government will delay the measures so that the General Chamber and the pharmacies will be able to relieve the burden, the pressure on Hong Kong. Thank you. Thanks very much, Mr. Lau. Next, Snow Brand Hong Kong Company Limited, General Manager, Sales and Marketing, Miss Regina Moore. Chairman, Dr. Ko, honorable members. I'm here on behalf of the Snow Brand Hong Kong Company Limited. And I'd like to say something about the supply of our company's brand. In the light of the previous experience over the past four to three to four years, over the Lunar New Year, there is, there tends to be a surge in demand. In 2011, there was the salami in Japan, and there was a surge in demand. Now, we have taken into account the experience in crisis management. And beginning from October, we would ask the Four Seasons, the dealer, to keep stock which will last for two months at least. Now, if there was a greater demand for number three, we would ask them to keep supply for two and a half months even. So in terms of Snow Brand, there is no imbalance at all. Now, there may be a baby formula scarce in Hong Kong. We have, this is widely documented in the media. They are very concerned about some people hoarding the products. But at the present moment, we have at least one month's supply. So there is enough to recover the deficiency. To supplement what Mr. Lau said a moment ago, in fact, there is adequate supply of baby formula in the market. Maybe there are a couple of brands that suffering from a shortfall. Now, parents or mums do have the choice. They don't have to run around for these products, of course. Some mothers are concerned about the difficulty of switching to other products for newborns. I understand that the government and the Department of Health have also told the mums in Hong Kong that all these products which are in line with the W H O standard would be good enough to use. I've had meetings with the government and I welcome this central government hotline. Now, our hotlines will be limited by the office hours. During non-office hours, over the weekend or after six, seven P M, this particular hotline will enable us to reach the mums. Otherwise, we will not be able to be contacted. I'm sure that in the long run, if you look at the pattern over the Chinese New Year and if they can increase the supply over this period of time, the problem can be addressed. This imbalance can be addressed. Okay, thanks very much, Miss Moore. Next, Hong Kong Suppliers Association Limited, Mr. Jackie Yu, Committee Member, Chairman. Members, I'm on behalf of the Hong Kong Suppliers Association. I'd like to say a couple of things, if I may. I've heard my, the previous two speakers. And they mentioned that they will communicate with the mums in Hong Kong to make sure that they will be able to buy the infant formula. And the other said that they will increase the stock. Now, I think there may be some communication problem. Well, I can see that there is Customs and Exis here represent. Hong Kong is very much a free port. Whatever you say, there shouldn't be any, any measures to stop people buying or selling anything at all. Now, this is the very point. I hope that will be borne in mind. Now, this is part of the core values of Hong Kong, freedom. At the end of the day, those the purchasers, I mean, we don't have any representatives from the purchasers, maybe except the, I believe, the Consumer Council can be represented here. I think we have to give a voice to these people. If someone cannot purchase the formula and if the supply is adequate, then, then I hope that there would be better communication between the ministers instead of just placing advertisements. There should be better communication channels open up. Well, the other thing is that there used to be licensing for rice. Should we do the same thing for infant formula? I mean, I hope that honorable members would consider this. Also, if you try to restrict parallel goods trading, I'm sure that the Customs and Exis would be working under tremendous pressure. Should we shuffle all the responsibilities to the immigration and the customs and exis when they're busy enough? So we hope that there should be better communication at the retail level. And I think that the companies will make sure that there will be sufficient products in stock. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Yu.
Bruno Chavat, the General Manager of Danon Baby Nutrition Hong Kong Limited, to address the meeting. Yes, Mr. Chavat.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share our views on the latest governmental efforts to stabilize the supply of formula milk in Hong Kong. So I'm gonna be speaking on the behalf of Danon Baby Nutrition Hong Kong, more known as the manufacturer of Can Gate brand in this part of the world. So at Danon, we have mothers and babies' needs as our top priorities. And we share the same objective as the one which has been set out by the government, which is to secure a stable supply of formula milk to meet the needs of Hong Kong babies and their parents. So we do appreciate the government's recent decision to set up a special formula order hotline that give assistance to the Hong Kong parents who could not purchase the milk either from the retailers or couldn't go through our very busy hotline during this kind of shortage of the formula milk in Hong Kong. So to support this effort, we have doubled our care line resources to operate from nine A M. to eight A M. every day. And our team has been working on Saturday and Sunday for the last two weeks to make sure that we have, we are there to stand by mums, to stand there for their babies. Our care line, more importantly, has handled hundred percent of the calls forwarded by the government emergency hotline within twenty-four hours. We call all of them back within twenty-four hours. And all mothers who have ordered our product will be delivered during the week before Chinese New Year. Moreover, we have checked with a hundred parents calling us to understand their level of satisfaction with the service that we were providing together with the government. And more than ninety percent of them claimed that they were supportive and appreciated the fact that we were going the extra mile to support them. Another immediate action that we have taken in order to deal with the shortage is that we have decided, even though it's much more expensive, to air freight product in order to increase our supply level and satisfy the demand of Hong Kong mums. So as you can see, Can Gate and Danon as a brand, we are highly committed to all mothers and their needs for the best interest of their babies. We are definitely more than happy to work with all stakeholders, the government, of course, the trade, in order to find a long-term solution to the supply issue in Hong Kong and stabilize it for the best interest of the public. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Chavat.
And next, I would like to invite Wise Nutrition Senior Public Affairs Manager, Miss Veronica C. Thank you, Chairman. In the past few weeks, some of the brands have not enough supply. But to this, we want to stress that there is no overall shortage of supply in Hong Kong. A lot of international brands such as us have enough supplies and can satisfy the needs of Hong Kong babies. We truly hope to, that babies will be healthy. And we're very responsible to ensure that there's enough supply so that all of the parents in Hong Kong will be satisfied. And in the past few years, the demand has increased. So we think that to solve this problem, we have to do it through supply. We have used a lot of multi-pronged marketing, market research tools to conduct research. So in the past few years, whenever there is a shortage of supply, we can, we do have enough supply in all the major retail places. And we also have very good running of the hotline services. They can reach us very easily. So we have, so this is like coming from our reports. So we understand that the administration has launched many measures to solve the problem of some of the shortages of supply. So we welcome the special hotline set up by the administration to help those who cannot buy formula. We will cooperate with the government to ensure the satisfaction of parents. So in terms of restricting the export of formula, we think that we should, it should not be affect regular commercial activities such as transporting milk formula to Macau for control measures. In terms, in the future, we will continue to have adequate supply. Furthermore, and we'll cooperate with different stakeholders to ensure that all the babies in Hong Kong have sufficient nutrition. Thank you. Next is Nestle Hong Kong Limited, Director, Legal and Corporate Affairs, Hong Kong, Miss Eleanor Chen. Thank you, Chairman. Now, Nestle understands that the administration and many others, and many citizens in society have a lot of concern about this shortage of supply of formula. Now, as a company that cares about babies' health, we continue to ensure steady supply as well as sufficient supply to give to Hong Kong babies so that parents can be happy. Now, it's almost Chinese New Year, then there's usually going to be a shortage of supply. So as the experience for the past few years, we have a set of measures to ensure that there will be enough supply. One is that we have increased, we've doubled our supply compared with last year. We are closely monitoring the supply in retail areas. If there is a necessity for this, we will air freight the products to Hong Kong. Furthermore, we're cooperating with the governments and to increase the services of mothers' clubs, such as including personnel as well as service hotlines, as well as to increase the time of service hotlines from nine A M. to nine P M., from Monday to Sunday, even public holidays such as C N Y, we will continue to use our service. So people will continue to take their calls and to deliver service. We also ensure that we can deliver after three working days so that the mothers can be satisfied. Furthermore, we are, we are undertaking periodic checks to retail spots to see if there is any bad practice in terms of retailing. If there is such practice, we will take appropriate measures so to prevent this from happening. In all of these measures, the supply has always been adequate and steady. So there's never, we have never had a shortage of supply. Now, currently, is that some brands and some types have been in short supply. Overall, in the market, however, there's enough supply. So we think that, do we really need to legislate to regulate all of the industry? We are concerned about that. Currently, in terms of the import-export ordinance, how will that regulate the industry? We don't have enough information on this. We hope the government can bring, can give us more details about your concrete plan so to give us, we can give an adequate response as to how we will affect us or what kind of measures do we need to do to cooperate with the government. Lastly, that the government is always, the Hong Kong has always been a free market. And we've always been very proud of that. And we believe in a free economy. So hope the government, so that unless it's absolutely necessary to prevent, so to not to intervene. Thank you.
Mr. Arnold van der Berg, please excuse me if I pronounce your name differently from what it should be, representing Frisland Campina Hong Kong Limited. Yes, Mr. van der Berg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Meeting local market needs and ensuring the welfare of our customers are top priorities for Frisland Campina Hong Kong. In response to the increasing market demand for infant and toddler formula products in Hong Kong, our company has been working closely with our retail partners and the Hong Kong government to ensure a stable product supply to the local market. The following is a summary of the actions that our company has taken in recent weeks to ensure that the needs of local mothers and their children's for milk formula products are fulfilled. On January eleventh, we announced an expanded product ordering service, the store reservation program, which is an additional channel available exclusively to Hong Kong mothers who are Friso Mothers Club members. This program allows Hong Kong mothers to have increased access to Friso's formula milk as they prepare for the Chinese New Year holidays. Club members are entitled to enjoy product order service at the suggested retail price through Friso's officials website or the Friso hotline. And they can choose to pick up their orders from a list of over four hundred selected retail outlets. We also announced on January twenty-five to double availability of Friso infant milk products to one million tins to ensure adequate supplies to the Hong Kong market over the Chinese New Year holiday period. We have expanded our hotline service capacity and extended the service to seven days a week, also at night and also during Chinese New Year to handle the order from Hong Kong mums. Last Wednesday, two additional measures have been announced, including the commitment of a one-year product supply guarantee to ensure certainty of product supply and delivery for members of Friso Mothers Club. At the same, an additional one hundred tins of different stages of products were delivered last Friday and Saturday to each of our existing pharmacy customers. Subject to the demand of different pharmacy customers, we may consider additional measures to enhance supplies required, including the option of restocking supplies via air freight. In addition to our company's initiatives, we also support the twenty-four-hour special hotline services established by the government, which refers Hong Kong mothers to Friso Mothers Club for product ordering. We are now processing the requests as promised. Products will be delivered within three days after the orders are confirmed. Those who made orders on or before February three will be guaranteed delivery of their purchased products before Chinese New Year. Separately, our company is taking additional measures to support the government efforts to prevent unscrupulous sales practices at the retail level. This includes regular visits to retail outlets by our company's dedicated staff to monitor the market situation, informing existing pharmacy customers that all customer complaints regarding irregular sales practices would be investigated and could result in termination of the relationship with our company. Frisland Campina will continue to support the government as it addresses this challenging issue. And we are fully committed to working with our retail partners to ensure a stable and sufficient supply of our company's milk formula products for Hong Kong mothers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. van der Berg.
Next, I would like to invite Miss Regina Tam, Marketing Director of Meat Johnson Nutrition, Hong Kong Limited. Chairman, everyone, I represent Meat Johnson Nutrition, Hong Kong Limited. Meat Johnson is very happy that the Hong Kong government is, agrees that formula is very important to Hong Kong babies and believe that it is a necessity for Hong Kong babies. We understand that the government needs to take a series of measures to protect Hong Kong's mothers as much as, as much as possible. And we continue to put a top priority to the needs of mothers and children and babies. To ensure adequate supply, we also have forty-six hotlines from nine A M. to the evenings to listen to mothers' calls as well as have orders online. So we're very happy that there's a central hotline from the government and we're cooperating with this. The first group of mothers have, have started to take what they, take formula from yesterday. Right now, we need time to understand and assess the amendments to the import-export ordinance. That is the impact on the citizens and the industries and as well as stakeholders. Because one of the core values of Hong Kong is a free market economy, we must defend this core value. We hope that the government, before amendments of any laws, would take into consideration of the free market economy and to balance it with the needs of citizens. Furthermore, we hope that the administration in amending the ordinance can discuss with the retail associations as well as related industries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Miss Tam. Next is Miss Florence Wong of Hong Kong Infant and Young Child Nutrition Association, Vice President. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Secretary and honorable members. Thank you Chairman. Secretary and Honorable Members. Now, in the past few years, there is a large demand for formula. So we have, uh, associated, we have discussed with many other different, uh, brands such as Abbott, Danone, Frisland Campina, Meat Johnson, Nestle and YF Nutrition. And they have cooperated with us and we've promised that if, once they can get an order, they will answer within two days and will deliver within three days. So in this framework of two and three, the parents can then get their products. So we are also ensuring that we will have adequate supply. So we hope that there will be a stable supply and we also have close communication with retailers and to ensure that parents have enough supply. We are also very concerned with the needs of infants and their parents and have actively adopted various measures to serve the Hong Kong parents and some of our members have said that, such as to increase the hotline services, to increase the time and as well as manpower. And there's also a website order from 24 hours a day. So we hope to bring the best nutrition to babies and to have a quick and flexible responses. So the main thing is that we must have close communication with the government and the citizens to ensure that the best service. Thank you. Thank you, Ms Wong. Last, I would like to invite, um, Mr. Andrew Wong Ka Chei from Abbott Laboratories Limited, Regulatory Affairs Manager.
And fellow stakeholders. Abbott Laboratories Limited would like to thank the panel on safe, food safety and environmental hygiene, the opportunity to present an update on our stock and supply situation in Hong Kong. Abbott has always had adequate supplies of infant and follow-on, and follow-on formulas for the Hong Kong market and anticipated for the additional consumer demand for its products even for the upcoming Chinese New Year. As we are conscious of our consumer concerns regarding the availability of infant formula in general, we have taken the following measures to reassure consumers about the availability of Abbott products. We are importing additional stock into Hong Kong by air freight. To reassure the government and the public, Abbott has more than two months of safety stock available for the market. Abbott will continue to closely monitor the market situation and maintain stock accordingly. If Abbott detects any unusual activities such as withholding stock by retailers, we will take the appropriate corrective actions, including limiting or suspending supply to those accounts. A new web-based ordering system has also been implemented to better serve the Hong Kong parents. Once an order has been placed, our customer service professionals will contact the Hong Kong moms for delivery details. Any orders placed through our hotline or web-based system would enjoy the manufacturer's suggested retail price with the delivery charge waived during this period. In addition, Abbott had extended the hours of our Abbott Mama Club hotline on the weekend to allow for consumer questions to be addressed. Abbott is following up on the information received through the government hotline and will deliver all the formulas before the Chinese New Year. Our customers are our top priority. Abbott is going the extra mile to reassure customers that we have a secure stock to increase demand power and has taken an innovative step with the setup of the online ordering system. Abbott believes that along with its good supply chain management procedures and these new measures, Hong Kong parents will be able to continue to obtain Abbott infants and follow-on formulas. Thank you.
Thanks very much and Secretary. Uh, the floor is now yours. But I'm sure that, um, those, um, who are, who are, who are watching us will have the same queries. If you listen to the other side of, um, the room, they would be puzzled as to why there was some shortage of baby formula over the past couple of weeks. So what are the, the problems? Now, some deputations mentioned, uh, a communication gap. If you can improve the communication channel, uh, the problem can be addressed. Now, i- if you want to go down the legislative path, we also let us know, please. Dr. Ko, Chairman, thank you. Uh, thanks very much, Chairman, for, um, arranging this meeting at such short notice. The government is very concerned about the health of babies and we would promote, um, the, um, merits of breastfeeding. I, I, we understand that some moms will find it difficult and to, um, to breastfeed their babies. So certain babies, in particular those below the age of six months, uh, will have to rely on infant formula. We have been monitoring the availability of, um, baby formulas, uh, in the market. Now, some representatives have already said that, um, over the past couple of weeks, notwithstanding, um, the increase in supply or in stock. Now, in fact, we don't have any reason to suspect that, um, there is any shortage in supply. We're grateful to the suppliers to work with us and, and take, um, rigorous measures to, um, tackle the unscrupulous retailers. I'm also glad that measures have been taken to, um, um, to increase the supply. Now, after monitoring the situation for a couple of weeks, in fact, there are still some parents, um, telling us that, um, for certain products, um, there is a shortage at the retail level. The hotlines for individual suppliers, um, are busy. They cannot get through. Now, as far as, um, the suppliers are concerned, um, the supply is adequate. Um, and we have reason to believe that, um, there is inadequate, um, availability at the retail level. Now, one of the reasons is that, um, in the, at the retail level, uh, we have a lot of small-time businesses and the quantities of infant formula products that they can store. In particular, when the parallel, parallel goods traders are stepping up the products, uh, they may experience some, um, temporary shortfall. Over the past couple of weeks, we have been liaising with, um, the suppliers and the retailers. And we hope that, um, all these measures that we mentioned will, uh, restore the order at the, um, retail level. Regrettably, uh, before, uh, the last weekend, we still saw in certain locations a level of supply that, um, could not meet the demand. And this is, um, this situation seems to be, um, spreading, um, further south from the northern area. Uh, we have, um, got reports that, um, the situation is proliferating to, um, Hong Kong Island or other parts of Hong Kong. So our, um, view is that if we do not step in and take certain measures, we may not be able to make sure the local households and local babies will be given, uh, sufficient supply during this Lunar New Year period. So we have taken, uh, short-term measures and that is, um, the hotline that we have set up. I won't bore you with, members, with minute details except to say by way of a report that, um, as of, uh, uh, 1st of February from 6:00 PM, uh, through to 11:00 AM, uh, this morning, we have received, uh, six, uh, four hun- 4,600 calls and 2,500, um, orders have been referred to seven different suppliers. As you heard a moment ago, we have, um, seven suppliers giving, giving the undertaking that, um, between 1st and, uh, 1st and 3rd of, uh, February, um, the orders made by the hotline, through the hotline will be delivered to the hands of, um, the, the moms in Hong Kong. I hasten to add that, um, this hotline is no more than a safety net. The major suppliers, um, services, um, their hotlines and also their web-based ordering systems will continue like normal. The designation of, um, a hotline is a safety net. For some reason, um, the, some parents, they cannot get, um, uh, the hands on the formula product and this is available to, to give them assistance. When the market, um, is restored, um, uh, back to normal, uh, we will consider, um, stopping, um, this hotline service. In the long run though, we feel that, um, we have, um, this sudden shortfall in the run-up to the Lunar New Year. There is, um, a surge in demand. Now, all the indications show that, um, the, um, the shortfall situation has, um, to do with, um, the parallel goods and trading. The parallel goods, um, trading activities, uh, will continue. That's why we do need to have long-term measures. The long-term measure, um, that we have in mind include law enforcement at, um, uh, particular points, uh, we will consider, uh, amending the import and export, um, ordinance. Other than those who have been issued with a license, nobody can export, um, baby formulas out of Hong Kong. Now, local parents may need to carry with them certain supplies of infant formula when they leave Hong Kong on a trip. And we also realize that if we have to amend the legislation to stop, um, the export of, um, the, um, the baby formula, then we have to, um, uh, consider that a mechanism should be put in place, uh, for, um, these kind of situations. So we are liaising with, um, the trade to understand how this particular trade operates and then put in place a mechanism so that, um, those who are engaging in these kind of businesses legitimately will be given a permit. So that's why we will only submit this, um, to the Executive Council in February. This has been widely reported in the media. Now, each person will be subject to a limit of 1.8 kilograms or two tins of infant formula products. This, we believe, will in the long term stabilize, uh, the availability of infant formula products. As I said, there are a whole host of other measures like, um, the measures announced by the Secretary for Security, uh, like the joint operations between Hong Kong and the mainland regarding the parallel goods and trading, uh, of infant formula products. Uh, there would be monitoring and there would be notification, there would be intelligence exchange and, um, stepped-up inspection of, um, the, the travelers. The Secretary for, um, Transport and Housing also announced four measures, uh, by the MTRC. Uh, one of them is, um, the weight limit for passenger luggage will be reduced from 32 KG to 23 KG. There will be a whole host of measures. We believe that all these measures taken together will be sufficient to address, um, the problems of, um, a shortfall of infant formula, um, in the long term and also in the short term. All right, and I'll, and I'll throw the floor open for members to put questions. All right, uh, whoever wishes, uh, to put questions, please your hands up, please. Uh, Stephen Ho, Vincent Fang, Emily Lau, uh, Leng Kai Lau, Claudia Mo, Albert Chen. I'm going by the list given to me by the secretary. Any, anybody else who's not on the list? No? All right then. Dr. Leng Kai Lau, you're on the list. Six. One in five minutes each. Uh, Mr. Stephen Ho. Chairman, thank you. Thank you very much, um, Secretary and the, um, representatives from the trade. Uh, in order to make sure that Hong Kong moms and babies will be able to get access to infant formula, they have done their best. Um, they have set up a hotline. I've listened, um, to the deputations. But I think we can, we can go home, we can finish our, we can, um, finish our work. There is no baby formula scarce in Hong Kong. Now, to address the problem, we have to, um, tackle the supply. Are you admitting that, um, there is a problem with, uh, supply? Now, you said that you've extended hotline hours and people can get through. The secretary made it very clear a moment ago that in fact people cannot get through to your hotline. How much manpower have you devoted to, to your service? Now, if we have, um, Tonghua fundraising activity, there are 60 hotlines available for people. I mean, do you have one hotline, two hotline or three on the outside and consider that to be adequate? Uh, please switch on, Mr. Ho's mic. Well, I'm talking about the hotline there. As a matter of fact, um, the government has, uh, set up a hotline, the three, uh, whatever. There have been, uh, a few thousand, 4,000, 4,000 callers. 2,500 have been referred to the suppliers. So in just a couple of days, you have, uh, all these, um, callers and you have, you have, um, seven suppliers. So do you have difficulties, um, adding, uh, the number of hotlines? You devoted so much, so much resources, um, placing advertisements on TV. Why don't you devote more resources? Now, this is, um, a question for the suppliers. I, I look forward to their reply. Whoever would like to reply, please do. Thank you.
None of them have difficulties getting, uh, formula. And I know that, uh, there was a reporter from Mingpo, they came, they called us and they could get the, they get through immediately. So I think that we have enough personnel to handle different crises. I can just say that in terms of services, that is, our hotline services has never been paralyzed. So that's all I have to say for that. Uh, Chairman, how about this? Because the secretary has said that, is saying that it's only some brands of, um, some brands are lacking. How about, uh, such as Meat Johnson or, um, Friso will answer us? Yes, Ms Tam, uh, Mrs. Stephen Ho has invited you to answer. Yes, thank you for the question. Yes, Meat Johnson has set up 46 hotlines and we answer calls from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And we also have, well, services of ordering from, what, the web. But in some busy times, it may be that if there are more than 46 mothers calling, that it may be that they cannot get through. So we really think that the government, the Hong Kong government has a safety net and we will cooperate with them to fill up this need. As we said, the hotline from Hong Kong, uh, we've, like, the, and if, they've could start getting deliveries from yesterday. So in terms of a hotline and web servers, we think that there is a, a stable improvement.
Asked specifically by the Honorable Member to, uh, answer the query about, uh, the unsatisfactory performance of your hotline. Any response?
Like we said, we welcome the additional safety net, uh, through the hotline from the government. Through this hotline until 1:00 PM this afternoon, we got 397 calls, uh, which were handled directly, uh, by our which were handled directly by our service team. This is about 10% of the calls that we get. So of all calls going through our hotline, 90% is directly handled by us through our own number, 10% through the government. So we are very thankful for this additional 10%. Our normal resources are able to cover the other 90.
Okay. 方刚议员，下一位涂锦新议员
Mr. Fang, please. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for all the guests who are coming today. First, I would like to say that the Liberal Party is against the administration taking these measures. We think that Hong Kong is a free market and we shouldn't, we shouldn't control the import. So that is a very bad example for Hong Kong. Looking at the measures of the government, it only seems like it's only helping the supplier to increase the hotline services. As Representative from Mead Johnson has said, and Ms. Tam, she said that they have 46 hotlines. So now, 46 hotlines is a, is a very extensive network. If it really, if there really is insufficient, so the government is only, you're only answering questions. Why don't you increase to 64 lines? Why do you need to have this import limitation measure? Further, we're only letting each person to bring two cans each time. You're saying that you're limiting parallel traders. How do you determine whether that person is a parallel trader? Hong Kong citizens, are there any Hong Kong residents who are becoming parallel traders? So is this person a parallel trader? So how can you not sell it to them? That's impossible. So Hong Kong's measures will actually cause the formula to increase in price because the parallel trading costs will increase. Furthermore, we always hear that there's a shortage of supply. Now, we heard from the suppliers, but why is it that the pharmacy associations say that we're still lacking supply? That doesn't make any sense. I would like to ask those two specific brands. Now, this year, all right, compared with last year, how much have increased did you have in terms of percentage? Have you increased the supply to pharmacies? For example, 100% or however much? I heard an answer is that we are having 1 million tins. Is that sufficient? Now, in a normal time, or perhaps during Chinese New Year, how much do you have, how much supply do you have? I would like to hear some figures. Now, and you have so many advertisements, but you cannot supply them to people. So what are you doing? So what you're doing is creating a panic of, so does that, is that through this panic, you can increase your price? That is what we're concerned. Now, secretary, why don't you answer Mr. Vincent Fang's question first? So we, I think that Mr. Fang's, on principle, what I understand is that first, the administration, that the selling of a formula, the administration should try to stop to intervene. But as I've said before, throughout, we've always been in discussion with retailer and supplier in terms of improvement measures. And this has been dragging on for two weeks. Now, in the market, everyone can see, now, of course, not just us, is that in terms of the media and a lot of different reports is saying that the supply has not steadied. So in this, we got there has been no improvement, we have to intervene. Okay, I think we should have one minute of time to let the two guests
See, I think the question, honourable member, was directed against both of you.
Which one of you would like to answer first? Perhaps Ms. Tam first, yes. We understand that a lot of members are concerned that other suppliers can, can we keep our promises to increase the supply? We are continuing to increase our supply. And in the past, we very clearly had a press release stated that from January 18th, we have increased 540,000, 540,000 tins of formula. And we know that every year during the Chinese New Year, there will be a increase of demand in formula. So when we are forecasting, we have accounted for this. But this year, in terms of the demand, it even spiked even more. So in this, it seems that there is a spike in demand and not just a lack of supply. Our supply has increased in
The honourable member's question?
The quote on 1 million tins is indeed from our company. To give more specifics, that is double, so 100% growth versus our shipments from last year in the same period of time. Like earlier mentioned, this is a higher spike than you normally see around this time of the year. Every year, Chinese New Year is a very busy period, not only for our product, but also for other products. So taking into account already the high demand from last year, it has doubled this year.
涂锦新议员，下一位刘伟庆议员，涂议员
Mr. James To and Ms. Emily Lau, Chairman, testing. Chairman, I think that, I think the best thing is that we can, the best thing is about how to order from the retailers. It seems, so it seems that it will be most convenient for mothers if they can order from retailers. Now, the government is saying that we should have a centralized hotline and then to refer them to suppliers. I think that's, I welcome this as a temporary measure, but I would like to ask, for example, if suppliers had said there is sufficient supply, it's only about the problem of distribution. So if we can handle this from, by ordering from retailers, then everything will be fine. Now, of course, there are a lot of retailers' points, but now we have a pharmacy association here. I would like to ask, perhaps you or your members, I think there are a lot of members, do you think that in terms of ordering through retailers, would you, would they welcome it? Yes, Mr. Lau, perhaps you can first answer the question?
Yes, in terms, because we have a 280 retailing points. So last week, and we started that 40 of these can help the government or mother clubs to supply formula and akin to mothers' clubs. But we are discussing with suppliers, so I hope that they can cooperate with us. Because, because in terms of a shortage of formula, it's only for number three, Mead Johnson. Or one, number one, number two, number three, Friso, sorry, not Mead Johnson. So in terms of, there are a lot of parallel traders. They are buying these three types of formula. So suppliers giving us the same supply, but there are more demands, so we have a shortage in those three types. And the other three types are, have sufficient supply. So we hope that these, suppliers will give us these three types and reserve it for Hong Kong mothers. In terms of other, and other types, then we can have free retailing. And that will be, and we will not jack up the prices now. Hearing from Mr. Lau, it seems that in terms of retailing, that I think some of them do agree with the delivering process. So I would like to ask, because they're talking about Friso. Now, if the retailers allow for delivery, that is not through this hotline. So if you're supplying, will you have difficulty in supplying number three? Mr. Lau, no, no, actually, I would like to ask Representative from Friso. So I'd like to ask Ms. Tam, please, sorry. Mr. Vanderberg, actually.
Question right, but if there are any specific orders made by retailers, relate to us. There's no problem to supply directly to those retailers. If they also give proof it's a Hong Kong mother and not a parallel trader. Because we prioritize delivery through either home delivery or through the 400 stores that are already participating for Hong Kong mothers. If other stores like to participate in this store reservation program as well, they're more than welcome to do so and we can deliver directly to them. Maybe also, earlier there was mentioned for some numbers. Through this system of home delivery and store reservation, we have already delivered to more than 10,000 mothers since the start in January 11th of this program, which is a considerable part of our consumer base. And we welcome any other stores to add to this program.
So they think that there is no problem. Now, if the government can urge there'll be ordering from retailers and if there's no problem with that, so I think there will be enough supply. So I hope, I don't know if the secretary can talk about this. Secretary? Yes. I welcome the suggestion from Mr. James To, but as we understand, in the, before the past weekend, to handle such emergency situation, I don't think we can rely this system. But this particular system, if we continue this, may be as a good solution. So we are going to welcome this. As I've said earlier, a 24-hour hotline cannot be a long-term solution. So what you've proposed is something that we're hoping to see and so, and will do our best to develop. But in the short term, I cannot rely on that.
Mr. Assembly Lau and then Mr. Helen Wong. Chairman, I welcome all our guests to Legislative Council. The people of Hong Kong are very, very concerned and they, they, they're worried about the scarcity of infant formula. But from the suppliers, seems to me that everything is all right. Now, Mr. Jackie Yu, the Supply Association, mentioned a communication gap. I think there may be a bit of a communication gap. The secretary said that there are, there are problems over the past fortnight or so from the media, from radio. We heard that many parents find it very difficult to get access to the infant formula. I agree with you, the Hong Kong price itself is a free port. We don't really want to do anything that would undermine your, your business environment, but I hope that you would understand Hong Kong's situation. And I hope that you would undertake that Hong Kong parents, if they want to buy infant formula for their kids, they would be able to get, to get them. I don't think the hotline should be funded by taxpayers. Now, you do have your own hotlines, perhaps after today's meeting, you may be sitting down and, and, and get your hotline sorted out. But the government hotline is so easy to get through, but your hotline is so difficult to get through. I'm not sure whether you are saying one thing and, and, and do another. Now, maybe you are making a lot of profits out of this. I mean, you, you, it is a profitable business that you should do something for the people of Hong Kong to make sure that they can get access to, to the, to the infant formula. I mean, if you have surplus supply, then you can sell them to the parallel goods traders, which is not an offense. The key thing in Hong Kong is to restore order to make sure that we can get access to the infant formula. I'm sure that you would agree with me on this one. I hope that after the meeting, you would take over, take back over the hotlines. I don't think the taxpayers should be funding your hotlines at all. Now, there are some points that have been made that are very good. You will not increase the retail price and you will be investigating the unscrupulous behaviors. I hope that they would be true to their words. I mean, they, they shouldn't attract any more complaints. I'm sure that we would invite you back in the days to come. Now, you have all of us here, now the secretary, what the secretary said seems to show a different story. The Customs and Exis, the Immigration Department, they are dealing with the drugs and things. I mean, they are asked to, to look after the baby formula. Why don't you talk with the mainland counterparts? And the mainland authorities have to enforce the law. They should produce better baby formula so that the mainlanders would have more confidence in their formula and don't have to step things up in Hong Kong. Now, over the past couple of weeks, I mean, the suppliers are telling us that everything is hunky-dory. I mean, is it, is it really the case? Are they telling lies? Would the secretary tell us whether they are telling the truth? Secretary?
Chairman, I'm sure that the suppliers and the retailers do have the commitment to make sure that there will be adequate supply at the retail level. That much I am convinced. But the reality is that this couldn't be done. There could have been many reasons and that's why the government has to step in. I hope the members would understand this. Now, you mentioned that the Customs and Exis Immigration are given this task and this is a reluctant choice. Because we, the underlying objective is to make sure that the babies and the parents in Hong Kong will be giving adequate supply. Now, as a short-term measure, we have the safety net of a hotline, but in the long term, we do need to go down the legislative path. Because if we're faced with this indefinite demand arising from the parallel goods and trading activities and if we cannot keep down the quantities required by the parallel traders and if we cannot increase the costs for the, those leaving Hong Kong with the infant formula, then it would be very difficult to make sure that the, the retailer will not be affected. What about the hotline? Should we fund the hotline? Should we pay for the business? Secretary, while we're not really funding this business activity with taxpayers' money, the, the objective of our intervention is to make sure that the parents and the babies in Hong Kong will be given adequate supply. We have given the undertaking that once the order has been restored, we will remove this arrangement. Dr. Helen Wong and then Dr. Leng Kai Lau. Secretary, you said that since the hotline has been activated on the 1st of February through to the 4th, you have received 4,000 or calls through the hotline. Can you tell us what brands are they asking for and what companies are involved? Secretary? Or the proportion? Now, in terms of referrals to the suppliers, the total number stands at 2,500. Well over 1,600. Ask for a particular brand, that is Mead Johnson, 300 or 400. For Friso. There is another one which attracted 200 calls and there is Cowen Gate. For the other ones, they, they're on the low side. Madame Wong. But Chairman, if I may put a question here, we do have doubts. It was said that there would be, that there is adequate supply in Hong Kong. There is no scarcity of infant formula products in Hong Kong. It's just, the shortfall lies with just a couple, some particular brands. Now, from what the secretary said and also from General Chamber said, it seems to me that it is just Mead Johnson that offered 2,500, more than 1,500 asked for Mead Johnson, Friso, 300, Cowen Gate, 200. Wyeth said that there are no problems with your products. Now, your few products are really, really causing the trouble. Now, do we have adequate supply? If we have adequate supply, then the three products that were mentioned, are we, are we suffering from shortfall for these, a couple of brands or products? I mean, do we have enough supply? Madame Tam, Mead Johnson.
Meat Johnson? Well Chairman, well efficiency unit referred to us all these calls, in fact, some of them are, are members and they're just repeating their orders. Now, we are the, the top brand in Hong Kong and maybe there are more people calling our hotline. In fact, we have increased our supply. This is a steady supply. Each year we, we have increased the supply at a level higher than the birth rate in Hong Kong. So we do have enough products to meet the demand of local mothers. That's why we have the Mama Club hotline and we would give top priority to the local mums over other people. Madame Wong. Chairman, when Meat Johnson told us a moment ago that you have increased by half a billion and the supply has some increased, but the demand has also surged. Otherwise, we don't have any problems with a shortfall with some particular types. Now, you know, you do know how many babies do need infant formula? Well, it was 95,000 babies born last year. I mean, the, the number would be similar this year. In terms of the suppliers, do we have enough for local babies? Yes, indeed, we do. How many more have you increased? And the problem is in the market, Hong Kong is a free market. Well, not only babies in Hong Kong consume the infant formula, there are mainlanders coming to Hong Kong snapping up the infant formula for their own babies or as gifts. And you should really make a sufficient provision, not just for Hong Kong, but also from, from these people outside Hong Kong. So, so do, have you made additional provision for these outside outsiders? Well, we don't have these specific figures. All I can say is that we have increased the steady supply, which is higher than the birth rate in Hong Kong. Ms. Wong. Now, the, the babies in Hong Kong is consuming this much, but the babies outside Hong Kong are consuming that much more. If you don't have the statistics about the outsiders and they're coming to Hong Kong to snap up the formula, and there is, there is going to be a shortfall with regard to the certain types. I think you ought to be more scientific in your projection. I feel rather confused. You said that you welcome the government's hotline, but you also are against the government's intervention of the market. Now, this government hotline is in itself an intervention. You should sort out your own hotlines. I agree with Emily Lau that the government should not answer or man the hotlines on your behalf and they're helping you make, make profits and you're attracting so many customers and you cannot sort out the supply chain. I mean, this is very much our responsibility. Can you undertake that, well, you better not place in the word adjustment, you better, you better take all the calls through the hotlines because there are so many people coming to Hong Kong for the baby formula. You have to sort out this problem. You have to increase the manpower. Maybe you have, you shouldn't have a 24-hour hotline. You have the hotline from 9 to 9. The government hotline is around the clock. I mean, it's ridiculous, isn't it?
Right, Dr. Long Kao Lau. Chairman, now secretary said, now Hong Kong is, trade is very important in Hong Kong. Now, trade is about that we don't make our own goods but buy them from elsewhere. Now, in terms of, if all the goods that mainland needs actually come to Hong Kong first, I think that would be great, of course, but it would be very difficult as well. Now, in terms of parallel trading, if you can remember that last year, now around 400,000 of those actually live in Hong Kong. Now, another 400,000 go back to mainland. So they also need Hong Kong formula. So if you restrict their export of formula, it's really not intelligent unless it's necessary. The secretary has said that, has omitted a very important point. Now, last few days, some professional bodies such as the Department of Pediatrics of two different universities and Hong Kong College of Pediatricians and Hong Kong Pediatric Society, they're saying that Hong Kong, that we do not need to just buy formula from one or two brands. So a lot of, a lot of members are confused about wider shortage for only a few brands, but it seems that only a few brands are making a great lot of advertisements. So it seems that perhaps it would be fair if we only restrict those particular brands in terms of export. Now, I am a consumer. I have two young children. One's almost one and one's one month old. One is buying number one and one, one is buying number three. Now, it's $160 and $210 per each tin. Now, I have no problems in terms of buying because I, my wife has found, has been buying the cheapest brand, so we do not have to buy from the most expensive brand. Now, there are 20 brands. If everyone is very irrationally only buying from one brand, then of course it will be a problem. So it's very simple. Secretary, you should stress to all the Hong Kong's mothers that, of course, the best thing would be to breastfeed and, and after that, just, and then, then they don't have to just buy from one or two brands. Now, I would like to ask the suppliers, now sometimes, I, I, I want you to reassure the Hong Kong mothers. Why don't you tell us that one year, like what's your reserves and how much do you sell each year? So everyone knows how much you sell as well as your stock. It's actually, you have like a three or four stock, three, four months' stock, then there will be no panic. So perhaps you don't want to say what's your reserve and what's your sale is. Perhaps that's a commercial secret, but can you cooperate and tell us your, the overall sale and overall stock for all brands? So perhaps also there do not be, we don't need excessive advertisements. And now, if only one or two brands is only, so if only two brands is getting criticisms, then it won't be good for industry. So would, so who would you like to answer? How about Frizzle as well as Meat Johnson? So Ms. Tam and Mr. Van, Mr. Vandenberg. So, okay. So I will have to answer your question from Dr. Lau. So can we, let's, so I don't know if I can release the total sale and totals stock. I don't know if this is the appropriate time for it, but if it will help the Hong Kong government or the Hong Kong citizens, I will ask the company to do this and perhaps in a different channel. So there are some retail figures that Hong Kong collects, so perhaps we can do it through there. So if all the members have a need or the secretary has a need, we can communicate within the industry to see, we can have a survey company to provide this figures.
To the suggestion of the honorable member, how about you?
I was still listening to the translations.
Yeah, 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 take your time.
I could simultaneously respond. Let me understand the question. The supply, we guarantee supply to all mothers that are contacting us through our website or through our hotline or through the government hotline. We gave them a 52 supply guarantee. So once you've contacted us, for 52 weeks, we will guarantee you will get your product. You don't have to worry about being able to buy it for a whole year. You call us once, after that, we can call you back.
Yeah, Mr. Vandenberg, but how about extraterritorial demand?
For the extra demand, we have increased our supply to 1 million tins, as we have said.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Claudia Lau, Ms. Claudia Lau. Now, the government is saying that there is a government hotline, so it seems to be helping the suppliers now in the future. If they want to increase the promotions of breastfeeding, that seems to be a conflict. I disagree with this. Now, as a mother myself, I can say that most of the mothers in Hong Kong know that breastfeed is better than formula, but there's a lot of reasons that we cannot breastfeed, that a lot of mothers need to work and maternity leave, there's only six weeks of maternity leave after birth. If we can do it like Europe, that we, there's a six months of maternity leave, then there will be a lot more breastfeeding in Hong Kong. Now, honestly, you're saying that there is no supply shortage in Hong Kong. That is not true. Please don't insult the parents of Hong Kong. Now, perhaps it is about the regional problem or just a shortage in terms of one or two particular brands, but in terms of shortage of formula, it's not just about in Hong Kong. You hear some international studios in Holland, England, Germany, Australia, et cetera. Now, the Hong Kong administration is taking special measures, but now, this is only for a short term. I would like to ask the administration, so you only started this in the end of February, now, but now there's a lack of supply. Will it be, is it that, there's a great confusion before Chinese New Year, you've announced the measures and they cannot be implemented yet? That is my first question. Second, if, in terms, now you're, in terms of your restriction to, for taking it outside of the borders, will you be afraid that if someone buys a formula and then like put it in a Ziploc bag and then, so you can't tell how many tins they have? So how do you handle this? Oh, for examples, perhaps, now only one person, one person can only take two tins. Will there be an increase in numbers of parallel traders to counteract your measure? So what will you do in response of this? Now Chairman, in terms of parallel trading, it's usually about we buying goods from somewhere that's cheap and then taking it to somewhere that's expensive. And then so this trailer traders earn a little bit of money, but now it's all about price. As everyone can see, it's about the problem in mainland China because consumers are very afraid. They're afraid that there's poisonous formula. So in this situation, now, there are 1.3 billion people in Hong Kong, in China, but there are only 7 million people in Hong Kong. Now, if all the Chinese people come and buy from Hong Kong, then we can't have to buy anything in Hong Kong. In the end, Dr. Ko, you are a doctor. You are responsible for food and health. Now, a formula is really, now it's very unfortunate that formula is within your responsibility. Now, last year, there are 20 million mainland visitors to, not, a lot of people visits to Hong Kong. Now, 56% of these visits are not, they do not stay overnight in Hong Kong. So I hope that you will, with the Security Bureau, can figure out the problem in terms of multi-entry permits. We welcome mainland visitors, but multi-entry permits and that is, and they don't even overstay, and then it causes a lot of problems with our borders. You can't blame the suppliers. They don't know how many people will come to Hong Kong again. Then, the only one minute left. Yes, Secretary, please.
Yes, thank you for your question. First, in terms of the enactment of the new amendment, I want to explain once again that this amendment is only for restriction of export, but we must also understand that in restricting exports, we have to ensure that there is normal commercial activity. Because of this reason, we have a licensing framework, but that will take some time. As what you said, from now until Chinese New Year, I think that within the next few days, or the past few days, we have seen the situation has improved, but of course, I cannot say that it's only because of our measures. We must take a lot of different measures, but on the other hand, in terms of this parallel trading, now during Chinese New Year, they will abate. So after Chinese New Year, we will continue to closely monitor the situation, but we are very confident that we can implement this, or we can take this amendment to the EXCO and then to, to implement it. In terms of many people, so too many parallel traders coming to Hong Kong, of course, we can't just take one measure to stop this. So I think that in terms of limiting it to two tins is already balanced different interests. One is to prevent the formula going out of Hong Kong. Next is to increase the cost of parallel trading. The last question in terms of other goods, that's also something that we're concerned about. So what is the next step for us? Will it be diapers? So we're very closely monitoring this. Now, all of the Hong Kong administration will look, monitor this as a whole and if there's a need, we will consider different measures. Mr. Tommy Chong, Chairman. I think the saddest thing is for the small and medium enterprises like, such as the pharmacies. Now, they are now making a lot of profits, but now they have a lot of restrictions such as only selling to Hong Kong mothers. Now, I feel very sad for them. Now, I don't really agree that the formula suppliers, now you have so many brands here. Now, of course, they welcome government's safety net now. We don't agree with this because you're using taxpayers' money. I don't understand why the suppliers cannot to, to make the hotlines to be available for 24 hours a day. Why can't you just increase personnel? I don't even want to ask the government how much money and personnel they're using to do this hotline. Now, because there's not enough time, Chairman, I would like to ask several questions. Now, I hear that you're saying that there's enough supply, but in terms of those two particular brands, I hear two particular brands and that is, and also the type for babies less than six months old, there's a lot of shortage for this. Now, I don't even know what two companies are there. Now, I don't know Dr. Ko, not Lau, I don't buy formula. Now, the question is, I would know for these two companies, now Chairman, I think you know, yes, I do. Now, these two brands, when they're talking about formula for babies under six months old, is there enough supply or is that, that you only have supply for other types of formula, but there's always been a shortage for those particular types?
Mr. Vandenberg.
I think this question is for Mr. Vandenberg and Ms. Tam. Madame Tam, will you address the question first? All right, Mr. Chong is asking us for number one, type for newborns, whether there is a shortage. Now, I can assure that there is no shortfall. We have increased the supply for this type.
Any shortage in the brand that you are representing?
No specific shortage for specific stages. All stages are fully available through our warehouse and supplied to the market. For instance, as you've seen the past week when we supplied for all stages products, over 100 tins to more than 800 pharmacies around Hong Kong, and they were products for all stages.
Mr. Chong, well, I, I won't, I won't teach the multinational companies how to do business. Now, it seems to me that there is a shortage in the pharmacies. Now, you give, you give me four tins, there are so many different brands, so many different types, one, two, three, four, five, and, and maybe there are 37 different types. I mean, rent is so high, I believe if I stock all, every single diaper, I mean, it'll come to 30, 40 types altogether. Now, the, the mums are calling you and you deliver them in seven days. Now, Hong Kong is such a small place. Hong Kong is a small place. I mean, if there is a shortage in a particular pharmacy, you just supply them. Now, if they say that, look, now I, I've sold out, why don't you supply me more? What, what trouble is there? I mean, you could just deliver them in a van. I mean, Hong Kong, transportation is so easy. Why do you experience any difficulties? Your sales network, I mean, do you replenish the stock once every month? I heard that you replenish every week. Why can't you replenish every day for them? You should have a better sales network. The pharmacies are selling all these products and, and they're making a couple of dollars more. I mean, what's wrong with that? If people come in and they, they sold out, you just supply them? Yes, the two, the two big companies? Yes, why don't they supply more? Madame Tam? Madam Tam and Mr. Van der Berg. Well, for different pharmacies, we have a different intensity of delivery. For larger pharmacies, three times a week. It's only small ones and it is once a week. So it's not the case that we deliver once a week. Well, I'm running out of time, Chairman. What I want to know is that, now it doesn't matter how big my pharmacy is, if I sold out, can you replenish my stock straight away? All right, why don't you direct this question at Mr. Lau Oi Kwok? When they're sold out, why don't you supply them straight away? Mr. Lau Oi Kwok, General Chamber of Pharmacy Limited. Well, the suppliers deliver once a week to small pharmacies. And they have the bundled arrangement. And they have to stock up on type one, type two, type three and type four altogether. Now, sometimes type one and type two go very fast and you're tied up with all these other types. All right, Mr. Chan. Well, I think we're getting to the, to the core of the question. The two major suppliers, I mean, you bundle, you're bundling the stocks. I mean, if type one and two go very fast, what about types two, three, three, four and five? Why don't you supply me with the type that I sold out? I mean, the government is really working flat out. The secretary is taken ill. You are the culprit. You are keeping the supplies in stock. You're asking this bundled arrangement. I can't see why you have to do that. All right, Ms. Tam and Mr. Van der Berg, please. Madam Tam, care to respond to Mr. Chan? Well, I think we liaise closely with the retailers. If the situation like this occurs, I have to find out about it. Because we are working together with the retailers. We're increasing supply and we are increasing the intensity of deliveries. As to the specific situation, I have to find out.
Mr. Van der Berg, any quick response?
We've increased our deliveries to daily, especially to the areas that have the highest demand as this moment in time. Normal cycles are indeed sometimes once a week or three times a week. This period, we do daily deliveries.
Okay.
Mr. Albert Chan and then Mr. Joseph Lee. My Chairman, there is a problem of profit. You have the wholesaler, the retailer, and you have the buyers, the pharmacies, Mannings and other chains. It is a big, there is a big element of profitability. I think ICAC should step in to see whether someone has pulled a fast one in between. Now, if you look at the structure, the retail price is $200 or $240 on the web. But in the mainland, in Pearl River Delta cities, it's somewhere going for 400 RMB. Now, if you look at the government statistics, I've got some figures here. Now, the only information I have is the products, which is 1.5 above, we're talking about 500 kilogram altogether. Most of them are actually formula milk. Now, each month, now if you sell 4 billion tins, the, in Hong Kong, the maximum that you're selling is no more than 1 billion. In other words, in Hong Kong, you are re-exporting 3 billion tins or two to three million tins are re-exported to, from Hong Kong. If the price difference is 200 versus 400, then ultimately the retail price should be $200 in the mainland. Now, each month are you going to make a $600 billion in the mainland of China? And there's, there are layers and layers of profits. Now, who is holding up the products? Now, who is making available the products to the buyers, to the retailers? We have to find out about it. We have to investigate, in particular for the two major brands. You give the products to the wholesalers, to the buyers. Where have the products gone? I mean, can you put all the figures on the table? How many have gone to Welcome? How many to Mannings? How many to pharmacies and so on? Now, you said that there will be an additional half million. Mannings don't have that many. Welcome don't have that many. They're all snapped up. Now, there are layers and layers of profitability. We're talking about millions and millions of dollars in terms of profits per month. So first of all, for the large suppliers, please put all the figures on the table. How many do you sell per month? And yeah, for some, some liaison people, the middlemen, how many did they get? I mean, otherwise, the situation would be very, very confusing. I can't understand why the government doesn't have any figures regarding the number of tins of formula milk that are sold in Hong Kong. So will the suppliers put all the figures on the table? And give us all the information, lay all the cards on the table over the past couple of months? Where have all the infant formula products gone? And then we bring in the ICAC. Right, Secretary first.
Right, I think we can get hold of the figures for members. Although we don't have them in terms of units, we may have them in terms of kilograms. Now, we can certainly identify the number imported, exported. These, the quantities of these infant formula over a particular period of time. I think we measure them in terms of kilograms. Mr. Chan, for November, you have 5.4 billion kilogram. 4.9 billion are for Hong Kong. Nobody can consume that much in Hong Kong. Maybe the suppliers can give us all the different layers of statistics so that we get a better picture. Maybe the, the middlemen may have pocketed a lot of money. Instead of selling the products to Mannings or Welcomes, they're selling to the mainland. Now, for the chain stores, they're selling them for $300. You're offering them for $220. But they're selling them at the pharmacies, three, for $300. There is no shortage. It's all a matter of price. If you can offer $400, you can buy as many as you want. There are some people who are pocketing the difference. But me, Johnson and Frizzle, they may, they may want to answer. Can you put all the figures on the table over the past couple of months? No more than that. Right, Ms. Tam, first. Chairman, we understand members' concerns and their desire for these T6. But as a listed company, we do need to have some approval from internally. Well, I ask the ICAC to investigate. Well, you don't have to ask me to do it. You can go to ICAC yourself.
Response to the honourable member's question.
We have no problem providing that information. But you, I'm sure you appreciate, given the competitive nature of our industry, we will share this on a confidential basis with the government. Any type of information that is needed on what channel it goes to, which customer, as long as it keeps confidential, given the competitive nature of our industry, we have no problem in sharing.
Well, can you provide those information in confidence directly to the government, to the administration directly?
Any question regarding this directly from the government that will be treated confidentially, we will share the information.
Thank you. In fact, to have taken those steps and to have obtained those information before you decided the way you had acted.
Well, next, Mr. Joseph Lee, Dr. Joseph Lee. Chairman, I've done a bit of homework before I came here. The secretary mentioned all these measures. There are 10 measures basically, and nine of them are targeting at the parallel goods. The last one is the hotline for the moms in Hong Kong. Now, this has been around for so long. Now, maybe this is the problem of the parallel traders and they're snapping up all the products. Now, we are told that there is a shortfall. I can't see how the government or the suppliers can vow that there will be no shortage. The Secretary for Security said that in Shangshui, all these parallel goods traders have disappeared. Maybe they have returned to the homeland for the Lunar New Year. But I heard that six, there is a 60-40 ratio. 60% locals or 40% gray goods traders. Now, the formula products, are they available to Hong Kong mothers? Would there be sufficient supply? Second, what measures do we have to make sure that there would be sufficient supply? Now, Mr. Albert Chan said there is plenty in stock. Why is it that people can't buy them? Are they snapped up by certain types of people? Now, Secretary, you remember when we're, when we're younger, we get information like how many katties of vegetables or meat or pork or beef are available in the market. And all the information are in the public domain. Now, each day, should we have the quantities of formula milk products that are available in the market, in what district, what retail price? I mean, if you tell all the information to the public, I'm not asking you to do it in the same way as the market groceries. But if you have the information, the quantities, in what districts, what retail points are available, then people will have some choices to make. Now, you can say that the average price is $220. I mean, if they're selling $400, nobody would be buying from them. Now, I understand that the government attaches importance to free market. But during this unusual time, you ought to have a platform. You have to make sure that there would be ample supply. I can't see any measures being taken to make sure that there would be ample supply. Now, the suppliers are telling us that there is a lot in stock. Why is it people are still experiencing difficulties buying formula milk? Now, the crowd in Shangshui have disappeared. But why is it that people still can't buy them? Now, as far as the suppliers are concerned, will you create a platform together with the government? Now, let's try this out for four weeks or six weeks to see whether we can resolve the supply problems. And that would keep people smiling ease. At least they would be in a position to know where they can buy these formula products. It's just like the outpatient clinics. If there are so many people here, you go elsewhere for this service. Thank you. Right, which one do you want to direct the question at? Well, it's up to them. All right, let's invite a guest first, perhaps. Who would like to have a go? If not, then I suppose Mr. Lee is asking me, Johnson and Frizzle, Mr. Van der Berg. Madam Tam, you would like to, Chairman. I think there's suggestions similar to the previous one. That is a more statistic to be made available to make moms in Hong Kong more confident. I think we can relay this message to see whether more data can be shared with the members of the public to inspire confidence. We have increased the supply and we have increased the supply to a level that is gone beyond the birth rate in Hong Kong. So we will have a look at the information to see how we can inspire confidence in Hong Kong.
One way to address this is what we've done on Friday and Saturday, giving 100 tins to each store. So every mom in Hong Kong knows that every pharmacy in Hong Kong has at least 100 tins in store. And we also said that we will repeat this effort as long as it's required at another moment in future. So then moms should know that in every store, they can find Frizzle in every pharmacy store.
Okay, the first round is over. Secretary, do you have anything to add? Please hurry. First, I want to point out is that even though we have figures for import and export, but we won't know about the numbers for parallel trading. So those formulas in Hong Kong, as to how much of that is going out of Hong Kong through parallel trading, that's something that we don't know. Now, that, now we believe that in terms of formula that reigns in Hong Kong, now a lot of it actually has left Hong Kong due to parallel trading. And that is why we have to amend the legislation to hope to significantly decrease formula from going out of Hong Kong through parallel trading. Okay, perhaps I would like to ask, now, just now, the question seems to be, the possibility is that the measure you talk, Secretary, is not the most appropriate. I would like to ask now, you say that you don't know the amounts of parallel trading, but don't you have an estimate? That is, how much, how much formula goes into Hong Kong? Now, how much is consumed by Hong Kong babies? And then I think there's an estimate at least of parallel trading. If you don't have an estimate, how would you handle, how will you solve the problem? Can you ask, can you answer this, please? Now, right now, if we need to make further estimates, we can try to make further estimates. Now, but throughout all these years, that is, in terms of how much goods come into Hong Kong and then go out of Hong Kong legitimately, I guess we can figure out what, figure out what's being consumed in Hong Kong by subtracting those figures from each other. Now, from 2006 to 2012, there's an increase for four to five times. Now, in the same time, the birth rate of Hong Kong has not increased by that much. Now, Secretary, if you want to ensure that the Hong Kong parents can buy formula, you must understand that it's not just about the demand within Hong Kong, but also about demand outside of Hong Kong. That is, people who buy in Hong Kong and bring it outside of the borders. You must include that in your estimates. Now, here from the suppliers is that there's no shortage of supply in formula. So, as I've said earlier, as Albert Chan has asked, I imagine that you, you should need to first know what the information is before you figure out what your measures are. It's not that, that you don't even have adequate information, such as how much is leaked out of Hong Kong through parallel trading. So why is it that the suppliers say that there's so much supply, but Hong Kong mothers cannot buy formula? You don't have information about that. So why did you announce their measures on Friday? So, it seems that there's, you, there's a vacuum of knowledge. No, that's not true. As I've said, we have figures that shows that from 2006 to 2012, the, the formula that is sold in Hong Kong has increased by that much. And in the same time, our babies, the birth rate has not increased by that much. So if we assume that in the past few years, the birth rate in Hong Kong should be around 30,000 or 40,000. Okay, so I understand. I would like to ask this. Now, the suppliers have said that there is no problem with supply. So you, so you know that Hong Kong has needs beyond, within its border. So now, you're saying that, now Mr. Lau has said that you give supply every week, but you also bundle all of your formula together in supplying it to pharmacies. So is that reasonable? Now, you also have to supply to supermarkets or another large chains. Do you not bundle your different types of formula together when you are supplying them? And prices is also different among pharmacies and supermarkets. Can I ask Ms. Tam and Mr. Van der Berg to answer these questions? Now, when we're talking about distribution price, now I don't think we can, we can get this information in such an open environment. In terms of bundling, yes, we have to look at what situations specifically. Because in terms of supply, we've increased supply in all different types.
Typically, we sell to stores, indeed all stages and not one single stage. We sell the amounts that are required for Hong Kong population. If a store requires from one specific stage more than you would expect, given the population distribution, then this would indicate that the store is mainly selling to consumers. then this would indicate that this store is mainly selling to consumers outside Hong Kong. We supply to stores what would be normal for a population.
What we hear now is that suppliers have an infinite supply. That is enough to satisfy outside and within Hong Kong borders. So I think that there's a problem with retailers. So I don't know if it's about communication or distribution, perhaps favoring. I think we have to handle all these problems. And then, before you give us the amendments. So if you don't have all these answers, how can we handle your intended amendment, Chairman? May I ask supplements? As I've said, there is evidence that from two thousand and six to two thousand and twelve, the formula that's sold in the local market, the total amount of formula has increased by four to five times. But in the same time, the birth rates, that is, those born in Hong Kong is thirty nine thousand to fifty so, or so thousand. That's an only increase of one point two, but the formula increased by four times. So we believe that there is a lot, that is a lot of formula that's leaving Hong Kong through parallel trading. And in fact, it's increasing. So why is it that the government needs to have all these measures? So one is to ensure that we have a safety net, that local parents have formula. And that is also to take about, increase our efforts to handle parallel trading. Now, now we have, Mr. Chen Chi Chuen. Yeah, Ray Chen. Yes, I think the question is that, the problem is that the government was too late. I think the problem has been solved, actually. The citizens seem to see that there has already been an effect. Now, two weeks ago was already the main crisis. But they only took action last Friday. If you ask supplier, of course, they'll say there's no problem because they are estimating from the birth rates in Hong Kong. But no one can, no one knows the figures for demand from mainland. That is, parallel trading, maybe that, it seems that promises, all the promises from China are coming to buy formula. But I think it's better late than never. Now, I'm not going to question your effectiveness of two tins. Now, some people are saying that two tins is not enough, so because there may be more parallel traders. Or perhaps Hong Kong people, when they're going to mainland, they'll bring just two tins of formula to earn some money. But at least you're willing to take some measure and then we can perhaps review its effectiveness later. But I think we must be quicker. You give so much time before you do something. I think you are giving too much time for parallel traders to change their tactics. That is, the operation framework overall. So, so I think that's true for all goods. So I think for this problem, the government should take action as soon as possible and not to discuss the effectiveness before there's even been taken. So I think that we must take the strongest measure and take it as soon as possible. And then perhaps to take it down a notch later. So, I think that after the Chinese New Year, then, that is, that is, we only already passed the most severe crisis period. But in terms of the overall problem of parallel trading, if we can have a piece of law, then we must enact this. Can you enforce this law for two tins? Now, Customs and Exercise Department is saying that that will be a big burden for them. So if you can't solve the problem because you can't enforce it, then that would be a shame. Now, for example, in MTRCL, the lowering the limits for weight, will that actually be effective? Perhaps our traders would go to a different MTR stations to evade this. So we must ensure there's proper enforcement. Now, have you thought about what would happen if these measures are not effective? What further action will you take? Lastly, I think perhaps we should consider have one entry per day as opposed to multi-entry permits. That is something that we have to review. So, or would the government be willing to consider this? Secretary, I would like to say that all these measures that we've launched this time, it's not something that we rely on long term. In the short term, we can see that we are, all a lot of different places such as MTRCL, Customs and Exercise, are trying to target the parallel trading. Now, as Mr. Chen has said, in long term, we must have a law to tackle this in hopes that we can significantly decrease the amount of formula that is going outside of Hong Kong through parallel trading. So this is not a short-term procedure. The short-term procedure is for the hotline service as well as increase the enforcement through Customs and Exercise Department. In the long term, we will closely monitor the, all of the daily necessities in terms of parallel trading. Okay, because this formula problem has got a lot of concern from citizens. So I will increase the meeting time to fifteen minutes. We have Dr. Helena Wong, Ms. Claudia Mo for the second round of questioning. Anyone else? If not, then including me, there'll be five overall. So it'll be three minutes each. Dr. Helena Wong.
Three minutes, please. A question for Dr. Cole. Now, we are reading a paper which encourages breastfeeding and to discourage the purchase of formula milk for babies between zero and thirty-six months. Now, after this scarcity crisis or the baby formula crisis, how do you think that the advertising by the suppliers would affect your effort to encourage breastfeeding? Can you tell us more about this, please? Secretary?
Well, I'm concerned about this myself. First of all, let me state my position clearly. I like to separate the question into two parts. First of all, the guidelines are still at the consultation period till the end of February. We will listen to all the views collected during the consultation period and we will collate the views and there would be further opportunities to take the matter up with the panel again. But I like to separate the two issues. Now, after this issue, the public opinion might change, but the government will not change its mind because of this particular issue. Because it is very much our policy to encourage breastfeeding. So because of the supply problem, it will not affect the way we deal with the issue. Madame Wong. Well, this is also related, Chairman. Not all products are suffering from shortfall. It is just one or two or two or three products and they're experiencing shortages. Now, for these products, they have really aggressive advertisements in the media and people outside Hong Kong and mainland, Guangzhou, Shenzhen, people are inundating Hong Kong. And they are buying up all these products, aggressively advertised products and hence the imbalance. So should we encourage other products to place more advertisement? Or should we stop all these advertisements altogether and encourage breastfeeding? Secretary? Well, I'd like to look at it from a macro point of view. In fact, we do have a working group which has put forward this idea of breastfeeding and the advertising for baby formulas and it would affect the promotion and education of breastfeeding. So we're looking at these from the macro point of view. But it would be difficult for us to determine whether the success of a particular brand's advertising would have some implications. Right, Mr. Tommy Jung, would I have a second round? Now, if I have to extend the meeting, I will need your endorsement. So I will extend the meeting after six, four to five, until we get in all the members, but no later than seven. Right, next, Ms. Claudia Mo. You're coming through. Chairman, Hong Kong is a free market. If you link the advertising with supply and demand, if you were to say that because of the advertising, that there is an imbalance across the market and then therefore we have to ban the advertising, does it mean that we should not, or we should ban Coca-Cola advertising on TV? Because Coca-Cola is outselling all the other soft drinks. This logic is absolutely flawed. Dr. Cole, I mentioned the Security Bureau. I think we ought to stop this multi-entry visa. I think quite so, the CEDB is also concerned here. This bundled sales arrangement is against fair competition. If these bundled services are in place, then it would be against the law. I'm not sure whether we should bring the ICAC into it. But if the bundling arrangement is causing the scarcity in the market, then something ought to be done about it. Secretary? Well, Chairman, now if there is any suggestion of bundled sale, then we will liaise with the suppliers at administrative level. Ms. Mo? Any timetable, Mr. Secretary? I've asked some pharmacies and asked them that, I told them that they've got a lot in stock and the boss told me that these products are not selling fast enough. Now, these pharmacies are forced to stock up on products that they cannot sell, that there are problems. Secretary? Well, you have my undertaking that the government will liaise with the suppliers and the manufacturers. I've got a follow-up question. Mr. Albert Chen and then Ms. Emily Lau. Chairman, the bundled sale may not be the problem of the manufacturers. It may be the go-betweens, the middlemen. There may be many, many complicated problems. So it would take a lot more information before we can understand the situation. Chairman, I find it wholly absurd that the mainland authorities do not enforce the law and people are really cheating on the taxation. And Hong Kong moms, because of this lax law enforcement in the mainland, are suffering from this shortage of formula products. It would be difficult for us to supply formula to the mainland. They have a birth rate of fifteen billion, but in Hong Kong it is sixty thousand or so. Now, we don't have the mainland babies born in Hong Kong. Each year, we have a birth rate of about sixty thousand. If you ask Hong Kong to supply formula milk to the mainland, then it was certainly causing balance. Now, the problem lies with the fact that the mainland authorities do not enforce the law at all. So I think that the source, the crux of the matter is for the mainland to do something about it. You may impose a two-tin ban. Now, look at the mainlanders coming to Hong Kong, thirty-five million per year or three million per month. And each, the two can limit would mean that there would be a requirement of two point six million. There are so many Hong Kong people who are couriers. And they are, because of the financial difficulties, they act as couriers for these mainlanders. So the problem lies with the lack of enforcement in the mainland. And I think that Hong Kong can impose some export tax, maybe one hundred dollars slapped on each tin or two hundred dollars on each tin. So, now we are really talking about this and after Lunar New Year is the peak period because they are scrambling for baby formula in the mainland of China. This year is the peak for this mad scramble for baby formula. They are going for three hundred dollars or four hundred dollars at the moment. So this week, I'm not sure how the government can do something about it or suppliers, how can they do something about it? You may be able to resolve some of the problems, but the price, the prices will go further up. So if the situation worsens, this, the two-can ban will not be the answer to the problem. By the end of the day, you have to slap a tax on the exports of these products. Right, Secretary? Taxation? Chairman? Well, this is a long-term solution because in these measures, we allow two cans per person. Now, we have regarded the fact that maybe some Hong Kong people who need to carry certain formula milk with them when they make a trip outside Hong Kong. You mentioned the enforcement of the mainland authorities. We have liaised with the mainland authorities. We have reached a consensus that there will be joint operation to tackle these parallel goods traders. I don't really want to bore you with many details here except to just say that all these series of measures are being undertaken with the support and cooperation of the mainland authorities. Ms. Emily Lau and Mr. Tommy Jung. Chairman? To tackle the problem at source, we need the cooperation of the mainland. I hope that the mainland authorities will understand that this is global news and this is very much a laughing stock in the world over what's happening in Hong Kong. I'm not sure how soon they will get on top of the problem. But the secretary might wish to relay our concerns and misgivings to the mainland. Now, if they sit either by whatever we do, we cannot solve the problem. If they do produce high-quality formula milk, they will not suffer from this situation. Now, our guests are telling us that there was no problem with supplies. Secretary, will you be meeting with them afterwards? I don't know how to tell them to do business, not my prerogative to do so. But you ought to meet them to make sure that in the next couple of weeks and maybe before and after the Lunar New Year, there would be steady supply at a reasonable retail price. I think they were telling us this much earlier on. I think you ought to meet them to make sure that this will happen and to tell them to sort out the hotlines. They ought to provide the hotlines. They have to fund their own hotlines to make sure that people can get through. And then the secretary ought to liaise with them after the meeting. Now, you keep coming back here. If you cannot sort this out, please tell us. If you can't sort it out, we can hear it on the radio, I'm sure. So please liaise with them to make sure that in next days, next couple of days, next couple of weeks, there will be no problems with supplies and there will be no more squilling, no more screaming among the public. Now, of course, you have to deal with the great goods traders. Now, the business sectors in Hong Kong is a free port for you to do so, that you have to consult them. I hope that you would communicate with them on a continuous basis. We need, we do want to get on top of the problem. Now, when the bill is introduced to us, of course, we will scrutinize it. But can you give us the undertaking that there will be no problems with local suppliers? But can you give us the undertaking that there will be no problems with local supplies in the next couple of weeks, months, and, and, and so on? Secretary? Chairman, I go along with, um, the honorable member. As I said earlier, this hotline is merely a safety net. It is, um, a temporary measure. So we will liaise with, um, the suppliers and, um, the retailers to make sure that, um, their supply chain will be improved. Because otherwise, it would be very difficult to make sure that, um, the local moms and dads will be able to get access, um, to the formula products. Ms. Emily Lau? Well, when there are complaints about, um, the lack of, um, formula milk, you ought to, um, you ought to, to be tough with them. Secretary, will you give the undertaking that you will do so? Right, okay. Mr. Tommy John?
Very simple, uh, simply, Chairman, to make sure the Hong Kong moms and dads will be able to buy the, uh, formula milk. Um, it is a very important thing for Hong Kong. So I can understand what, um, whatever measures, um, are being adopted by the, um, secretary. But there are a couple of things that I'd like to mention. I don't really, uh, want to, um, to, um, to, to see, uh, all these, um, action being taken against, um, the, the parallel goods traders. The Hong Kong is a re-export, um, center. We are not producing anything by re-exporting people and making money. What's wrong with that? And that they are, they are, they're renting all these warehouses, um. Are you saying that, um, that there will be, um, prohibition on re-export of, um, these formula products? I think the key thing is to make sure that there will be local supplies. Now, let me come back to the point that I made. Now, uh, when you buy pork, um, uh, you get given, um, the extra, extra bone. Now, um, I believe if, uh, if I'm a pharmacy, I stock up on this stage and you, you, you're giving me the bundled products. Now, the, um, that, I mean, even if I, I stock up on, on these products for parallel goods traders, what's wrong with that? I'm doing business, I, I, you, you shouldn't care who I sell, sell the products to. Now, these are small-time pharmacies and they, they are suffering from, from this bundled arrangement. And they, they, they're stuck with the products. And I don't think I can accept this arrangement because you're bullying them, um, to put it bluntly. Now, now if they, they stock up on, uh, stage one, you're asking, you're asking them to stock up on, uh, three, two, three, four, five. Now, you're saying that you have enough supply and, but you're squeezing the, the pharmacies. Now, you, you may not, you may not need to, uh, to import somebody, uh, stages two, three, and four. Well, who, who would you like to, to direct question at? Well, I'm just asking the administration to be, to be balanced and they, they should not all, they should not be overzealous. I'm not too concerned about the mainland authorities not enforcing the law. You don't have to, to worry, to do the worrying for them. You should tackle the big fish instead of the small fries. I think the suppliers, the, uh, the importers, um, should not shake their responsibility because they are squeezing the, the small-time pharmacies. They, they sell out the products in three hours, but, but you're giving them the bundled list of products. I don't think I can, I can accept this at all. Perhaps you might wish to follow on this, Mr. Secretary? Or we can ask the Consumer Council to do something about it.
Yes, I think our follow-up. In terms of bundling, uh, we will definitely discuss with retailers and suppliers. Lastly, I would like to ask Mr. Lau. Now, you mentioned, uh, it was mentioned about bundling, that if you buy number one, you have to, you have to buy number two, three, four, et cetera. Now, besides this, has the price, is it, is your price given to pharmacies different from the price given to supermarkets? In terms of prices, we, we know what our prices are for us, but we don't know the prices offered to supermarkets. But you are sure that there's bundling? Yes. Oh, I don't know, but I don't know whether, like, big corporations have this bundling. Now, okay. I would like to ask the suppliers, especially, uh, Madame Tim and Mr. Vandenberg and Mr. Chevall. Now, Secretary has said that within the entire system, within the past few weeks, was not effective. Now, you told us is that there should be, should have been no problem. You keep on monitoring the numbers and then you have a hotline. And then also there's air freight to Hong Kong. Now, if you said was, if it was, what you said was actually happened during the past few weeks, then we wouldn't have needed the measures taken by the government. Can the three of you simply answer me? All those measures that you said earlier, were they effective during the past few weeks? And if they were not effective, why is that so? Perhaps, uh, Madame Tim, can you, uh, answer first?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Let's know. You're asking whether in the past three weeks, in terms of hotlines, web ordering, and as well as air freight, said, yes, we did those, all those things during the past three weeks, were they ineffective? I guess we can only say that the market's demand was spiked during those three weeks. Now, those three measures that we promised that we would do, we actually did do them. Now, if you actually did take the three measures, then they wouldn't have the situation where there's a shortage of supply in Hong Kong. I think, uh, Mr. Chan had said, we're saying that there are a lot of demand from mainland China. And now our numbers is, are, we, we, okay, we can only say that our increase on supply is enough to meet the supplies in Hong Kong. Now, of course, I can teach you how to do business, but of course, you can't have, but I don't understand why there would be a shortage of supply when you have so much supply, as you said. So I completely do not understand. You're saying that in the past two years, there was an increase during CNY. So can you undertake that, uh, the existing system you have now? That is, now, if the government system is in place, then can you promise that there will be enough supply for Hong Kong parents? We can only say that all those mothers can get the goods, uh, through the hotline or through the web ordering.
Uh, Mr. Vanderberg, do you want to, uh, answer the questions that I put?
I, I could add a few words about everything which has been said. Yes, there is an issue, uh, just before Chinese New Year. We know that, um, it's very difficult to forecast and predict the surge of demand. We have at the same time taken, uh, in partnership with the, the government, extraordinary measure in order to mitigate the issue. And this is the reality of the situation today. Again, every single mom who's buying our product, giving it to their babies, we can guarantee the supply to Hong Kong moms. Forecasting the additional demand coming from mainland China is one of the most difficult exercises that we are confronted with all here in this room. And I think that's the reality of what we are discussing. Um, we have, again, put very strong measure, tripling the number of people in our care line, making sure that we allocate sufficient supply for Hong Kong moms in order to mitigate the issue. But we should not deny that there is an issue in the forecasting. That's the root cause of the issue.
Uh, Mr. Vanderberg?
Maybe I can add, but also repeating some of the points that I said. We started with these measures in January eleventh. Um, so over the past period, we have increased these capacities, et cetera. Uh, I agree, you can still see issues in the market. Um, but issues for Hong Kong moms can be solved by contacting us directly and we can guarantee them their product.
Now, we must end the meeting now, Secretary. But I hope that, uh, hearing from the suppliers and the members, as well as retailers and the general chamber pharmacies. I think that all the Hong Kong citizens have doubts. If there's an infinite supply as well as, uh, a monitoring system, that, that they were actually willing to air-fright the products, there should not have been any problems. But now you're saying that some measures will be taken, but the law is only enacted in the end of the month. And there's a vacuum period before then. So I think you agree that in terms of a retailing network, that, that a lot of measures that can be taken. I think if you do this, now, I think that there are a lot of officials behind you that can do this. Uh, so, so for example, the Customs and Exercise Department will have less of a burden. I think you, during this, uh, period before, uh, the bill is tabled, I think you can take these measures. Now, of course, we will review the, the bill when it comes. But a lot of members ask questions. Is that we hope that there will be no, that we hope that we don't see such creative legislation. And our guest here today also said that Hong Kong is a free trade market. Do we need to have such strict laws? So we can discuss it later. But during this few weeks, I hope that, uh, you will take some work, to do some work in terms of a distribution network. Okay, yes, thank you. Uh, Chairman, uh, very simply, if the government can consider that all of formula has to, uh, the going out of the boundaries must open a tin, then maybe that will be solved the problem. So I want to thank everyone for attending our special meeting. Uh, panel, we'll have another meeting tomorrow. Thank you, everyone.